This is NHTV Two, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the town of North Haven.
Yeah, should we shut the door?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our June first Board of Selectmen meeting. I'm Mike Frida, joined by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Buemi. Great to see everybody. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for our pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number two, any public comments to tonight's agenda? Okay, we'll move to item number three, the approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectmen meeting on May fourth.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second that approval.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then I'll motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Selectmen's special meeting of May 12th, 2023.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any other discussion? Hearing none? Call for that. All those in favor?
Aye.
There will be no slide presentation tonight, so we're going to dispense with the overview. But I'd like to turn it over to Sally, right on number six.
Yes, this is an item that I requested, and I appreciate you putting it on the agenda. And so I am going to make a motion that pursuant to applicable provisions of the Freedom of Information Act, that we enter into executive session to discuss possible litigation and/or legal matters. So I make that motion.
Just a second.
I'll second Sally's motion here.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we will go to the main conference room next door. All right, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We're back out of executive session. No action needed to be taken. We'll move to the next item on the agenda, and I'll turn it over to either Bill or Sally.
I'll take number seven. I will make a motion for the approval of the 2024 Board of Selectmen meeting dates listed in the agenda. The meetings will take place in the upstairs conference room, number one of the North Haven Memorial Town Hall at 6:30 PM. Meetings will be on the first Thursday of the month, with the exception of July. Ah, I see, July 11th. Because the first Thursday is the Fourth of July.
Right.
And that's a special day. So I will make that motion to approve those meeting dates.
I'll second Sally's motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item.
Item on the agenda is to consider and vote upon whether to refer to the town meeting for its approval an amendment to section 163-3 of the Public School Security Supernumerary Program Ordinance in chapter 163 of the ordinances of the town of North Haven to extend the program term for five years to remain in effect through fiscal year 2028.
All right, before we get to the resolution, which Sally will read, it's a program that I 100% support. I pushed hard for it back in 2018. I've talked to, in the last five years, over 1,000 parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, and everybody loves this program. So it's our goal to adhere to the procedure. The ordinance has expired. That's why this is on the agenda. We will call the town meeting to engage public comment. But this is a very important program to the town of North Haven, the faculty, the teachers, the students, the parents, the aunts, uncles, and grandparents. Sally, would you like to read the resolution?
Yeah, so before I do, I support the, this extension as well. I don't think it expired yet. It expires at the end of the fiscal year, June 30th. So I'm glad that we are having this meeting. We're doing an extension because I think that's easier to do than if we had let it expire, then we might have to have adopted a whole new one. So it has not expired yet. So, but I am fully supportive as well. And so, reading number nine, I will make the motion for the following resolution to refer to the town meeting for its approval an amendment to section 163-3 of the Public School Security Supernumerary Program Ordinance at chapter 163 of the ordinances of the town hall to extend the program term for five years to remain in effect through fiscal year 2028. So I will make that motion.
And I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 10.
And then, in conjunction with that, item number 10 is to consider and act upon a call for a special town meeting to be held on Monday, June 26th, 2023, at 5:30 PM in the upstairs conference room, number one of North Haven Memorial Town Hall, 18 Church Street, North Haven, Connecticut, 06473, for the following purpose: to consider and act upon an amendment to section 163-3 of the Public School Security Supernumerary Program Ordinance in chapter 163 of the ordinances of the town of North Haven to extend the program term for five years to remain in effect through fiscal year 2028. So I'll make a motion for that special town meeting.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item.
Well, we have appointments and resignations here, so I'll start with a motion to accept the resignation of James Thompson, 18 Carriage Drive, as an alternate on the Inland Wetlands Commission, term to expire December 31st, 2025.
I'll second his resignation.
All right, in discussion. Jim, I'd like to thank you very much for your service on this commission. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next.
I'll motion the reappointment of Kenneth Quick, 5 Hamilton Court, to the Cable TV Advisory Council for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Ken, thank you for your willingness to serve again. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Reverend Scott Morrow, 34 Bassett Road, to the Cemetery Commission, for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2025.
I'll second Scott's reappointment.
All right, we have a motion and a second. In discussion, Scott, I'd like to thank you. You've always been a valuable asset on this commission, so thank you for your service. All those in favor?
Aye. Next is I'll motion the reappointment of Todd Ritchie, 27 Fallon Drive, to the Cemetery Commission, for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Todd, thank you for your willingness to serve. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Carl V., 30 Allendale Drive, to the Cemetery Commission for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2025.
I'll second Carl's reappointment.
Carl, thank you very much for your willingness to continue to serve. All those in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Jaclyn St. Peter, 58 Juniper Drive, to the Quinnipiac Valley Health District Board of Directors for a three-year term to expire June 30th, 2026.
Second.
All right, Jackie, thanks for your willingness to continue. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Jay Stacy Yarborough, 12 Susan Lane, to the Quinnipiac Valley Health District Board of Directors for a three-year term to expire June 30th, 2026.
I'll second that reappointment.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Stacy, thank you for willing to step up to do this for us. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll motion for the reappointment of Julie Nuzalillo, RN 7 Mansfield Road, to the Quinnipiac Valley Health District Board of Directors for a three-year term to expire June 30th, 2026.
Second.
All right, thank you, Julie, for your willingness to serve. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next item.
Yes, next we have item 12, bond releases. I'll take the first one, which is identified as P. 21-10, 144 Washington Avenue. The amount of the original bond was $12,000. The current balance of the bond is $12,000. I'll make a motion for the release of the entire bond balance of $12,000 with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and the town engineer. I'll make that motion.
All right, just a second.
I'll second that release.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
The next one, in terms of a release, is number P. 08-32, 133 Middletown Avenue. The amount of the original bond, $30,000. Current balance of the bond, $30,000. I'll motion the release for the entire bond balance of $30,000 with the recommendation the Planning and Zoning Commission and the town engineer.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next item.
Item 13, we have property tax refunds. I will make a motion to approve the property tax refunds. There's just two there listed in our agenda.
I'll second those refunds.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item 14, ladies and gentlemen, the next meeting of this Board of Selectmen is Thursday, July 6th, here at 6:30 at the upstairs conference room in Memorial Town Hall. Item 15, public comment.
I just very quickly about the supernumerary program, which of course I support wholeheartedly. But I just had a couple of questions since this is an extension of the existing ordinance. When I reviewed the ordinance, it said that the North Haven Police Department actually appoints supernumeraries based upon the general orders of the North Haven Police Department. So I'm just wondering, have those general orders evolved at all? Because it says that they are subject to change. So I'm wondering if during the last five years, they've evolved.
Not to my knowledge. I think they're all at the same place. I mean, that would be the chief's decision. He regulates that. Our job is, or my job is, just move it forward to get it, to move it forward, so.
And I'm not aware of any changes in the ordinance which lists duties and responsibilities. So we're just extending the term.
That's it, yeah.
I see, so the duties won't change at all? They are exactly as they were defined five years ago?
Right, it's clear. Our motion was just on the term. I believe we probably had it for five years because what you do with new programs like this is you want to have a testing period, and you want a significant enough period. And as Mike said, it was very popular. I've also gone to many events, as you both know, at the schools, you know, Flag Day events, veterans' events. And I hear from teachers and principals as well, like you have, that they are very happy with the program.
Yeah, I mean, today was a good example. So I'm over at Clintonville School, and there was the Special Olympics torch run that started in North Grandford. So some of the parents who have special needs children asked if I would consider attending. So as Val knows, I was there at 8:30. So our SRO there, he made sure that all the class, fifth grade class, he led the teachers to the corner of Sachem and Clintonville Road, protected the safety, and had cones set up in advance. And I was there with all the children and the special needs children. The law enforcement people stopped, took pictures with everybody, and the kids really enjoyed it. But the point is, the SRO is there helping protect the children.
Again, kind of getting back to the original list of duties that was established back in 2018. First of all, I'd like to thank Selectman Buemi because I believe she went through that list and made some very important key edits that ultimately made it an even stronger program. But I'm just wondering, since it wasn't run past the Board of Education back in 2018, has this been kind of formally discussed? I know you're talking about, you know, there's been lots of feedback saying people are supporting this, but I'm just wondering.
They're in contact all the time. There's such a tight connection between the police department and the Board of Ed. Of course, they've had the conversations on the responsibilities.
No, 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 not just have they discussed the responsibilities, but was the Board of Ed involved in this decision to have it come before the Board of Education, before the Board of Selectmen to actually have this program extended?
Yeah, the Board of Education is 100% on board with this. They're very well aware of this.
Right.
So yes, the answer is yes.
Okay, so they weren't actually involved back in 2018? So that's why I'm asking.
They were involved in 2018. Of course, of course, they were involved.
They didn't vote on this?
Well, they, you know, they supported it. They supported it unanimously. Whether they voted on it, they wanted us to move forward with it.
Okay, I guess I'm trying to understand how they.
Let me ask you this. What difference does it make? What's the difference?
Whether the Board of Education is involved.
What difference does 2018 make about them not voting on it, let's say?
The role of the Board of Education is actually to establish what happens in the school system. So if they were not involved in the original vote as to whether the supernumerary program should go before a town meeting, I'm just asking whether the Board of Education actually voted this time to extend this particular program.
The Board of Ed supports this 100%. So I think we have to leave it at that, and they'll be at the meeting, the town meeting coming up.
Terrific. Okay, that's all. Thank you very much.
And I think, you know, all we're doing, again, is extending, I think, an ordinance that, you know, that exists. So I'm not sure that it's necessary that they have any vote on it right now.
Well, again, if the idea was to have a five-year test period, perhaps sharing with the public, not just among themselves, but sharing with the public, the Board of Education, which of course has evolved during the last five years. There are different people serving on the Board of Education today than five years ago. It might be useful to have the entire Board of Education actually discussing this particular program at a Board of Education meeting and a vote to take place in order to be able to say, at the town meeting, that this board unanimously has voted in favor of this, and we support it wholeheartedly.
Maybe you can bring that up with the Board of Ed. Again, it's not necessary from the standpoint of the ordinance.
Again, it's not a question of whether it's a regulatory necessity. It's really just a question.
I think it's a good, you know, bring it up to the Board of Ed.
Yes, I think, and a lot of the history behind this is coming back to me. And I think what Barrett is saying is that, you know, school security is really a Board of Ed responsibility. And in fact, I remember reviewing the original wording of the ordinance with Attorney Coppola. We were on the phone, reading it, and the very first line. Do you have it there?
I don't have it, no, unfortunately.
It originally said that, for purpose, it said the purpose was to provide school security. And I said, no, I don't like that. I said, it's to enhance. The Board of Ed provides security. And so if you look at the ordinance, in the intro line, it says the purpose of the supernumerary program is to enhance school security. So I think that was part of the reason why, you know, the town meeting was all that was necessary because the town meeting was voting to enhance school security with a program run by the police department. And so I know, but I understand her point that overall, school security is the responsibility of the Board of Ed. So that's probably why she's wondering if they support that. So I'm sure we'll hear from them at the town meeting. But this is an enhanced security that the town is doing for the Board of Ed.
I can tell you, the Board of Ed is 100% behind it. Maybe we'll hear from them at the meeting.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yes, Bill?
Tuesday night, I missed the first concert series.
You were there, or you missed it?
I missed it.
Oh, I was there, yeah.
All right, and something was going on. I came back by later on just to see what the crowd turnout was. It looked like a great crowd of people for the first one to kick off. The only problem is, up on Trumbull Street, when I came down Maple Avenue, going to Trumbull, it was a total nightmare with traffic up there because of the way the people are parked on the street up there. And two cars couldn't get through, and even emergency vehicles would have a heck of a time getting through.
Were they double-lane, double-parked? Is that why?
No, there were all different angles sticking out, projected out upward, antique cars up in that section. That is the narrowest part on the hill up there. And people were squeezing through, coming both directions, trying to get through there. And I know I talked to you before on some things that could be done up there if we don't want to have, you know, if we want parking, or it's posted no parking. Maybe, unfortunately, the police department's got to do something about it because it, I, you know, I'm sitting on the green of the concert. I really can't see after the concert starts what it's like up there. But it was, you know, very, very narrow trying to get two cars through, stop and go.
So the police have regulated this in the past by eliminating double parking on both sides. So it should be just one row of parking on the green side of Trumbull, not double parked on the house side and the church side. Now, they did an analysis years ago, a few years ago, saying that two cars can get through there if there's only one side where people are parking, so.
This was on the, this was on the green side where they were really out into the middle of the road parked.
Oh, so that's what you're saying? But they weren't parked up, okay.
The house side is fine up there on the hill, all right? But on the green side, where they usually have a posted no parking, it was, you know, being at a concert, normally, you don't see what's going on on top of the hill. But I just came around there to see on my way back home, and it was extremely tight. The fire trucks would definitely have a problem getting through there.
So what we'll do is, I have a solution. What we'll do is, we have a large deployment of CERT team members there on site. I'll just have them watch and make sure that the people are parking close to the green. It's a simple solution, so.
That will work, yeah.
We have the people there, so.
Yeah, because most of, say, three-quarters of that street up there, you know, it's wide enough now that you could get over onto the grass.
Right.
But down at the bottom, Maple Avenue, on Trumbull meets, it was extremely tight.
Okay.
All right.
So I think we have about 1,000 people there, Bill, because I walked a crowd up there.
It was a good crowd.
I was actually the last person out because every step I took, people wanted to talk to me. But it wasn't as large as what we're going to see.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because when we see Journey, Bruce Springsteen, these tribute bands, that's going to be jam-packed there.
I know, I know. But with the CERT people, maybe that would help out.
Yeah, that'll help, yeah, yeah.
Instead of having the regular police department up there.
So Val, what we'll do is, we'll call the head of the CERT team. We know him a little very well. We'll have him deploy his people up there, and we'll make sure that they're parking closer to the green rather than, you know, three feet into the street, Bill.
Yeah, they were down where you drive the antique cars in. And right there, there is no grass rule they pull on, so they were on both sides of the street, and, you know.
We'll take care of that.
All right, thank you.
Good seeing you, Bill.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Yes, Jenny?
Jenny Caldwell, 26, not 26, 69 Kimberly Circle. I forgot where I live. I'm just, coming tonight, I just really wanted to bring up an issue that I'm hoping, Mr. Frida, that I can maybe talk to you a little bit more about privately. But a couple of months ago, you guys were voting on something that was a permit or something that was approved by the state. And during that conversation, at some point, Mr. Piper had said, well, if, whatever this permit is or, you know, plan that was approved, it was up to the state to make sure that whatever they approved, you know, that all of those regulations or perspectives were met. And it, that sort of made me think that I really wanted to come talk to you about some issues that happened with zoning permits. So in our town, when you, when you want to put up a fence, you're supposed to have a zoning permit. Now, not everyone goes and gets them, but you, you know, you're supposed to go in. Laura approves the plan, and you pay your $60. But then there is no real enforcement for if you don't follow your plan. And I have had a very large problem with my neighbor that has gone on for almost a year, which has led into almost a level of harassment where she has finally went and got a permit and put a fence that was actually on my property. And so when I would go to Laura and say, this is on my property, and I knew it was on my property because I spent the several thousand dollars that it cost to have a survey done. So I wasn't asking the town to determine where my property line was. She told me it was a trespassing issue, was a trespassing issue and I needed to go to the police. Then I went to the police, and the police told me, "It's a zoning issue and I need to go to zoning." And I ended up having to pay for a lawyer to try to take some legal action to get, to prevent this. But it was, it's been a year of the police being called and, you know, trying to get a fence that's not supposed to be on my property off. There's been some other harassment things with videos going on, and I don't want to get into all of that. That's why I would like to speak with you later or at some point privately. But I think if we're going to have zoning permits that are approved, that there should be some enforcement that they actually follow the zoning, you know, what has been approved, which was, here's your property line. Your fence needs to be either on the property line or inside your property line. But it was on my property. So, it was up to me to either pull the fence up myself or get a lawyer to try to get somebody who was trespassing on my property essentially to stop. And it's gone on and on for the last year, and I think one of the reasons it hasn't stopped is there's been no enforcement to, from a perspective of trespassing or from a perspective of being, not following what was on the permit that was approved.
So, I was listening very carefully how you described this. So, the nature of the permit process is, and I tell people all the time who may complain about the permit, the permit represents an insurance policy for the resident. You pay the $60, $80, $100. What it does is that it is an insurance policy so that the town comes back and inspects the final work so that you're protected, and the town stands behind it. Without the permit process, what happens is, some of the contractors who, years ago, didn't pull permits, well, there was work that wasn't done properly because there was no final inspection. And I'm digressing just for a moment because I want to give you a full perspective, Jenny. So, a guy came to me crying in tears about six years ago here. He said that he couldn't sell his house because there was an addition on the house. Banks are now looking for the permits. You can't sell a house without, if you had an addition or a debt, because the banks want to see the permit processed, because you don't want someone to buy the house to get a faulty deck or whatever it may be. Now, in your case, it sounds like that the question would be, did Laura know where the property line was in the beginning?
So, I had a, I had a survey. I brought it with me. So, there's two, there's two permit processes. One is the building permits, in which they come back and inspect. The problem with the zoning permits is nobody goes back to inspect, "Did we follow what was in the permit?" So, and I will tell you, I have spent a lot of money on building permits to make sure that I follow all of those rules. There are many people around me who do not because they're expensive, but I do. And, you know, the building inspectors come back and inspect, and I understand that whole process. With the issue I have with the zoning permit is, you pay for the zoning permit, and there is no inspection to say, "Hey, you are within your property line. You're within the height that you're supposed to be." When you, like, if you get a permit for a shed, the zoning part of it is not, they're not checking, it's not a building permit where they're checking to make sure the shed was built correctly. They're making sure it's, you know, the 25, or the 10, I think it's 10 or 15 feet from the property line, but no one comes back out to inspect to make sure it is actually, you know, that many feet from the property line. So, I think that's, that's the difference between the zoning permits and the building permits. I, you know, I'm willing to pay them, and I understand the purpose of them. I just think for the zoning permits, you're paying for them, but then they're never getting inspected to ensure that the zoning regulations are actually being followed.
So, in that permit that you were talking about for that, for those fence, right?
Yep.
So, it showed the demarcation of the property line? I mean, everyone would know that upfront?
On the one that I had, yes, because I brought her a survey. I paid for the survey so that I would know exactly where my property line is. And I actually, so what started the whole thing was I was taking trees out that were on my property, and she didn't want the trees to come down. So, then she tried to move her property line in between the trees. And so, I had the surveyors come back out. I paid them again to come back out and draw the trees so that it was clear the trees were on my property and I had a right to take them down. And so, I had the survey to show where it is. She didn't have a survey, but she could have gone off mine. So, I mean, I think that the issue, again, is when I, when I've talked to Laura, and I, Laura is an incredibly nice person. So, this is not anything against Laura. The problem is, you know, she's saying, "We can't determine the property line." And I'm like, "I'm not asking you to. Here's the proof of the property line." And it's all staked out. I've had them come back at least three times, restake and everything. They've had to put multiple pins in. This has been all at my expense, trying to get pins in, so it's very clear where the property line is. And so, you know, I just, you know, between the issue of there's no ability to deal with someone trespassing on your property, and, you know, the zoning piece of it isn't being enforced afterwards or even inspected afterwards, because you can't enforce it unless you inspect it. Now, there may be some other circumstances in which she inspects, but for a fence, they don't go back and inspect to ensure that what was on that piece of, you know, you have to draw a little plot of where the property line is and where the fence is going, how tall it's going to be, to make sure that that's actually what was constructed.
All right. I'll tell you what. I mean, you gave, you provided a lot of good detail here. We'll look into it. It's not, I'm not involved with fences, of course, but I'll look into it, and we'll see what we can do on this, okay? Laura, you know, Laura's probably one of the best zoning CEOs in this area, so there's got to be a reason. I'm not sure if it's part of the zoning laws where there's no requirement to go back, but we'll check it out for you, okay? I understand it could be very anxietious when having a neighbor dispute over these issues.
Well, for me, it's led into, you know, I'm probably going to have to end up taking legal, because she's out, I had some guy trimming trees on my property yesterday, and she's out videotaping them, harassing them, because, for whatever reason, she's now decided she's the keeper of my property. So, you know, because she's been allowed to kind of keep going with this, she, I have pictures of her in my yard, taking videos, all this other stuff. So, it's become a very contentious piece, and again, that's why I wanted to talk to you about some of this privately. But I just really, if we can look at...
We'll look at it, yeah. So, can I ask you, in this case, what's the variation? How many feet are in dispute here?
Initially, initially, it was because she kept pulling the fence in between the trees because she didn't want the trees to come down. So, I mean, I've really tried to just ignore most of what's gone on. I have, I mean, there's, there are a bunch of things that I probably have to go back to Laura about that are in violation of the zoning rules, that are making sort of the property difficult to enjoy. But, you know, a lot of it has to do with that, moving the fence in taking pictures. If, you know, the survey people were trying to resurvey, and she's in between the trees taking videos in their faces. I mean, it's just been, it's been a very stressful year, and I just, you know, I just want you guys to be aware of the fact that when, with, in terms of the zoning with the fences, and it's not just fences, any of the other zoning regulations that deal with property line distances, if they don't go back and check them, I'm just, it's unclear on, you know, how we make sure that the zoning regulations are actually being followed.
Well, it's nice to hear that the original permit had the line of demarcation, right?
Yeah, because I brought this survey with me.
As an aside, you know, when you mentioned earlier about my comments several meetings ago, it had to do with kind of an unusual situation with the solar fields.
Yes.
Where it, you know, which was, I'm not sure, Sally and Mike, you may know something different, but it's one of those unique area, or could be a unique area where, just to make sure that these are all done correctly, the state's taking control of, you know, through the Siding Commission or whatever, the installation and, you know, to make sure it's done right, that it's tied into the grid, and it's really outside of any of our, you know...
Yeah, that was, I just...
So, it's really an odd one.
Yeah, I mean, I was just...
That had nothing to do with our planning and zoning.
It made me think of the fact that, you know, really, that if we're, if a plan is being approved, and then it should be, then it is the responsibility of whoever, you know, giving out the permit to make sure it's being followed. And one of the last thing I'll say about this is, in terms of the fence, because I've, you know, it's been a big issue in my life for the last year, and I've talked to other people, and I know people who've had to actually move out of their houses because of stuff like this in North Haven. So, it seems like if there's a way to make sure that, if two neighbors are left to dispute their property line and ripping up pieces of fence that aren't supposed to be there, that doesn't seem like it's the best plan to have and make sure that, you know, that people are, you know, resolving the issue.
The fence that you're talking about, she installed, your neighbor installed the fence?
So, initially, yes. So, there was a, originally...
Did you check and see if she pulled the permit to put, because maybe that's not why there was no follow-up, because she...
No, so, you know, the history is...
You could check and see if she pulled the permit to do it.
She hadn't. There was an eight-foot fence that was actually on my property. It was like four and a half feet onto my property, and when they did the survey, she needed to remove it. But then, they just leaned it on the trees that were on my property. And then, once she found out, I went over to her and just said, you know, "I'm going to take the trees down. You might want to just, even though there wasn't a permit for this fence, you need to, you know, do something to secure it because my trees are going to be gone." And then, she decided she didn't want the trees to be gone. So, I mean, I have pictures of it. She just ended up weaving a fence in between the trees to prevent the tree company from bringing it down. So, and then, when I got a lawyer involved, then that's where it came out, you need to have a permit. So, she went and got a permit for another fence, for a smaller fence, and it's been a back...
So, that's the, that's the permit that needs to be followed up on, that one?
Yes, yes.
So, you want, you're looking for the appropriate town employee to follow up on your neighbor's permit?
I don't think you're going to be able to solve my problem at this point. Truly. I mean, it's, the, I got a permit and got a, you know, a six-foot fence. There is a couple of other things I have to deal with that are, relate to this whole fence issue, but, you know, her, the chicken wire fence that she put in was on the other...
Chicken wire?
Yeah. It was on the other side of the, was actually on the other, on the inside of my property, and the pins were on the other side. So, it was clear she was not on her property line. And Laura came out and looked at it. She also videotaped Laura. But, yes, so, I mean, I'm not looking to have that particular piece solved. There are some other zoning things that are being violated that I need, I have to talk to Laura about. But I just think that if we're going to, if we're going to ask, if residents are going to get permits, zoning permits for fences, it's really important to make sure that their fences are on their property and not their neighbor's, and that the neighbors aren't left to be the ones to enforce, "Get your fence off my property." And that's what's happening.
I understand what you're saying.
Right. No, I got it. Okay.
We do Blight Commission, all right, on Blight properties. They can get fined up to $100 per day, right? If they go on Blight, they don't comply. What happens when it comes off at the end? Now, they're required to pay if they sell that house? They're required to pay all the way back on that?
The way it works is, there's an aggregate sum of monies that are owed on Blight, on the 100 hours a day. And then, the attorneys negotiate a settlement from there. But there's always a payout. Town gets money from the Blight Commission fining that property 100 hours a day.
All right. Now, what happens if they sell it to somebody, their property, and go in and just go remodeling, ripping the whole house down, part of it down, remodeling? They need a building permit, correct?
Oh, of course, yes.
Lots of permits, yeah.
I know a couple of properties that were on Blight, and I go on the website, and I don't see no building permits on them. And one of those two properties, they were tore down around the Christmas time. Got it out. I went by there and watched, got watching, like, "What are you looking at?" Like, four dumpsters, I mean, 40-yard dumpsters. I didn't read. Now, the thing is, that house right now is not, they've done a lot of work. It's not finished. But when you look at the website, I don't see any permits taken out listed on our website.
All right. So, what I would say, Bill, report it anonymously. They will go out. Our people will go out, and our building officials will go out. This has happened in the past, and they went out there and stopped the work until the permits were pulled.
Right. And one of the, one of the two properties now, it's a residential, and it's being run as a business, posted on the house, too.
Well, that's a possible zoning violation that could be reported to Laura, and Laura will go out there, just like she did for Mrs. Caldwell.
Yeah. I was just curious on the end, if the deal was worked out, whether they had to get a permit to get it done, or they just had to pay the fines that were accumulated?
Well, they had to pay the fines in some sort of negotiated settlement, and then they have to, 21 Longcrest is a good example of this, where they had, they took permits out, renovated the house.
Okay.
But, you know, unfortunately, there might be, in every city in town, those contractors who don't pull the permits. Then, once the towns or cities find it, they go out there and they'll, they can put a cease and desist. That's the power of the building official.
Yeah, it's sort of been stopped for a while, building it on the, what they've been doing on it, but, you know, maybe they did do something over at the town hall annex on that.
Yeah, maybe.
I'll let them know.
Yeah, I mean, because if, by reporting it anonymously and keeping you out of it, Bill, you know, we don't want any retaliation, of course, but you're actually helping the town in what you're doing by reporting it anonymously. Or you can report it here, and then we'll talk to the Building Department. You're doing a service to the town, but you're also doing a service to the person who's going to end up buying that house.
Right.
Because that person, without those permits, if that person tries to sell that house, they can't sell it years from now.
Okay. And the other thing is, we're losing our money.
They won't be a CO.
Right, a CO. That's what I mean. You're helping the town because of the fact that it's revenue, right.
And as much as we try to keep our records up to date on the website, I wouldn't say that that is conclusively true. So, if you're concerned, I would go down and...
Yeah. After the meeting, I'll, I'll give you two addresses.
Because not everything always gets to the website right away, or...
Well, this has been a considerable amount of time on some of these projects where I've seen nothing on it.
Yeah. The website isn't like the land records, which is like the official record of land ownership, mortgages, conveyances in town. The website is only as good as the data that is entered into it. It's not an official, the official records are at the zoning office, the Building Department. You know, if it was demolished, there'd be a demolition permit.
Yeah.
Or there should be. So, you know, I wouldn't rely exclusively on what is and is not on the website.
In other words, it's not like going to the bank and putting the transaction, and you can see it immediately, is what we're saying.
Right, right. So, you know...
All right.
The other, the other thing, too, is, and I had this conversation with a contractor, you know, not too long ago, is that there's differences in what requires permits on a town-by-town basis. So, you know, you know, so sometimes the contractor who's used to doing business in one town will not know that permits required in another town.
Yeah.
So, you know, so that could be, I mean, it may not be the situation that you have, you know, or that you've referred to, but it's interesting, you know, from, based on the conversation, looking at what we require permits for versus other towns, I could see where the differences were.
Yeah, I was just told that Wallingford, as well as our town, when you take a permit out, they want to know what type of nails and screws and bolts are used, you know.
Sometimes it may be lax, maybe more lax, you know, or don't, don't have the resources that we do, or Wallingford has.
Right.
No, that does happen. That's very true, yeah.
Yeah, but contractors are ignorance of laws, no excuse. They're in the business of performing work. They have to know what the permit process is in every town.
I agree.